Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to the August 12, 2024 meeting of the Rockingham County Planning Board, which I am now calling to order. Next item will be a quorum determination, and we do have a quorum present. Our next item is invocation, and we're going to call on Mr. Corey Scott for our invocation.
Let's pray. Our Father in heaven, we're grateful to gather in this planning board meeting. We're grateful to serve the community. We're grateful for the citizens' interest in what goes on, and we are grateful to live in a wonderful county, Rockingham County. Father, we need thy help this day as we discuss the items before the, before the planning board that we might be guided in what we should do. And we pray that will be the discussions and the information that is shared will be courteous, kind, and that we might be able to appropriately respond to the needs of the community according to the guidelines and regulations of the state. We pray for thy help in all we do, Father, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Savior. Amen.
The next item is adoption of the agenda. Before we adopt the agenda under new business, I'd like to add the, we're going to administer the oath of office to newly appointed member Duane Rickstraw and reappointed member Corey Scott. So if you'll mark your adoption, your agenda accordingly.
I would also like to add a new business, if I may, sir.
Do what now?
I would like to add another new business discussion, if we could.
What is that?
We had discussed a couple of months ago about reconsidering the plant, the land use plans around some of the more, other corridors, and I was hoping we could get some information from the, from the staff about the status of that.
Okay. Is staff prepared to give us an update on that?
I can give you a brief.
Okay. We'll add it to the agenda under new business. With that, I'll consider a motion for adopting the agenda as amended.
Our motion, we adopt the agenda.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the agenda with the words "as amended." All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the agenda is adopted. Our next item is approval of the minutes for the July 8 meeting.
I recommend approval of the minutes for the July 8 meeting as presented.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adopt the minutes of the July 8 meeting. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. Again, no opposition, so the minutes are approved. Next is information for you folks about rezoning. Zoning map changes reviewed by the planning board are legislative matters. These map changes are reviewed for reasonableness and consistency with North Carolina General Statute 160D, the county's 2021 land use plan, and Unified Development Ordinance, among other adopted plans. When making a decision, we consider the recommendations of planning staff and public comments. When applicable, this board reviews potential land uses requested by the applicant. Planning board decisions are forwarded to the Board of Commissioners as recommendation. The Board of Commissioners will hold a public meeting before making a final decision whether to approve or deny a zoning map change recommended by this board. A zoning map change is the first in a series of reviews and approval that move a project forward. The Technical Review Committee reviews the site plans and technical items related but not limited to later development approvals, including transportation concerns, environmental issues, and county services. The TRC is comprised of professional staff and other agency members, such as the North Carolina Division of Transportation, county schools, emergency services, and North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality. Each case on the agenda requesting a zoning map change will be presented to the planning board by a member of the planning staff. Following the staff presentation, the case applicant will be given the opportunity to brief the board regarding the case. Following the applicant's presentation, the planning, planning board will provide a public comment period. All persons who would like to speak during the public comment period regarding any rezoning case being heard by the planning board must sign the case file roster located at the entrance of these chambers prior to the beginning of the meeting. At this time, has everyone had an opportunity to do that? If not, please raise your hand, and we'll get your name on the roster. The public comment period is not a forum for a dialogue or debate with the planning board. The express purpose of the public comment period is for the planning board to receive additional facts, comments, and opinions regarding a request to change the zoning Speakers will be called in the order in which they signed up. Speakers will be given a three-minute period to voice their concerns. No speakers are allowed to address the planning board twice during the public comment period. Before speaking, each person will be asked to give his name and address for the record. After all the speakers have been heard, the applicant will be given the opportunity for rebuttal, which will be followed by board discussion, motions, and voting. And with that, we're going to ask staff to present our first case for zoning map amendment, case number 2024-17.
While that's loading, I did get a text from Lynn. He wanted to tell everybody hello, and he started his new position today, so he jumped right on in, but he misses y'all.
We'll miss him as well.
All right. So first, we have case 2024-17. This is a conditional rezoning. This is for a property, a portion of a property. It's about two and a half acres that is currently both neighborhood commercial and residential agricultural, and they're requesting to go to neighborhood commercial conditional district for that portion. It's located at 1658 NC Highway 704, right there at the intersection of McCollum Road. This is still in the Wentworth Township, and again, this is a conditional request. Here's our vicinity map. It's on our western side of the county, but not the west side. Here's a zoomed-out zoning map showing that the area all the way around it really is residential agricultural for the most part. There is some RM to the north, heavy industrial over there by the landfill to the east, but that large track there that's hashed out, that you can see there, I did not put a zoomed-in zoning map. That little purplish section in that top northern corner there at McCollum Road is currently zone neighborhood commercial. There's an old shop there, and the rest of the parcels are A. Here's the environmental map. This is in our Dan River Eden watershed four area, give or take at the, just a little tip of it at the top of it, but the southern part of it is out of any watershed. There is a stream flowing on the middle of the property, but it is eastward of the development area that's requested. It's in our O2 land class, which does call for the majority of lands to be residential agricultural, very little commercial districts, but again, citing that this one is already partially neighborhood commercial, by its nature, is deemed to be somewhat reasonable for the possibility of commercial. And O2 does call for the possibility of small commercial establishments occasionally. This is just your partial overview of the existing conditions. And here's the proposed site plan from the applicant. As you can see, it takes a little bit further than that little tip that is neighborhood commercial, brings it back further east and all the way down to Web Loop, and that being the entirety of the development project as well. The desire is, should this pass, it would be subdivided. We've already taken this to the Technical Review Committee so that they could add comments related to the site plan. Those have been provided to you in your packet. After the maps. There were not many comments at the TRC regarding this, other than, you know, the typical commercial driveway permit, fire marshal's looking for a knock box in the building. We discussed expansion for, of the garbage area to contain the dumpster area, not just the dumpsters, but the garbage carts. Fully detailed site plan, clarify the exact elevations and renderings, which they provided, some renderings in the project in your packet, and otherwise, everything about the site meets the conditions of the UTO. So there are restricted conditions that they pared down on the list. The list of the current allowed uses are in your packet, as well as those of the reduced uses, largely being reduced only to retail shops, not exceeding 3,000 square feet, signs on premise, and convenience food stores without gas pumps. And then temporary buildings incidental to development. Staff does find that this is largely consistent with the land use plan and our current zoning ordinance due to the nature of the dual zoning of the property as it is, and we find it to be reasonable with largely, again, due to the dual zoning and the size of the land that they'll be doing, plus this area being kind of a commercial desert. And with that said, I'll take any questions, but the applicant is here to discuss further.
Is there any questions from Marzy?
Yes. When you say subdivided, what does that mean exactly?
The tract of land that they're looking at to rezone to this neighborhood commercial conditional district would, in the future, be split off from the remainder of the large track, is what was described to us during TRC. So it would no longer be one large parcel, it'd become two.
Okay. And how big is the new parcel, then?
Like I said, this is plus or minus two and a half acres of development.
Okay.
Sure. Keith.
On the site plan, it's under the DOT, NC DOT comment, does that have to be done by a licensed PE?
I'm not sure about that. That's DOT's requirements and what they review. I'm pretty sure that engineers typically do their, their designs. I'm not sure what their requirements are, though. We, all I know is, we won't proceed with our permitting until we receive everything the DOT needs first.
Was there any calls about it?
We had four, I left my sheet over there, Vic. I think we had four inquiries and two opposed.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So six calls, four just inquiring in general, what's going on, and two actively opposed.
Okay. Thank you, Marzy. Is the applicant represented? Would you like to speak? You have seven minutes.
Good evening. My name is Daniel Almazan. I am, I do site acquisition for Terramore Development, and Terramore is a preferred developer for Dollar Generals. And so this particular store is, is slated to be a 10,640 square foot, which, which is basically our new, new prototypes that are mini-markets. So if you've seen the store, like in Summerfield, maybe in Stokesdale, those are, those are the new format stores, even though I think that they have been, from a company standpoint, have been pushing more fresh produce and more coolers in order to have a little bit more of a grocery store feel, and that's exactly what they're looking at in terms of, and what staff basically touched on, is we have a food desert out there, and that's, that's one of the opportunities that they hope to fill. And let's see, I, I know that we're going to have time afterwards because I know that we have some people that are, have concerns. I'd love to be able to, to address that, and, and I appreciate the new process that, that Rockingham County has with the TRC because it gives us additional feedback and allows the process to be a little bit more vetted. And so again, we look at this opportunity to talk to planning board, and any improvements or question, concerns helps us to make a better project for everybody. So if you have any questions for me, I'd be glad to answer them.
How many square feet did you say it was going to be, sir?
10,640.
Sorry, I over missed one of the conditions. It also retail, not elsewhere listed, but this also falls under convenience stores without gas pump, so 10,000 square feet would still be allowed.
Even though the other one says 3,000?
Well, if you look at the next item down from it, it says retail, not elsewhere listed as well.
All right. So that covers it?
Yes.
I also have my engineer with Breck to answer any specific questions, because I think there was a question of whether it was licensed engineer who did the plan, and it is. Okay. If you have any more questions, be glad to answer them.
You will have the opportunity for rebuttal after the public comments.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We did get your name and address, right?
Daniel Almazan, it's 214 Clumac Road in Salisbury, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a few speakers that have signed up to provide comment on this case. First, we're going to hear from Tina Jones. And for the record, please state your name and address.
Tina Jones, address 182 Web Loop, Madison, North Carolina. Good evening. I would like to start off by thanking you for your time and consideration as I speak behalf of myself, my spouse, and fellow neighbors that cannot attend this evening regarding our objections for the rezoning request of 1658 NC Highway 704 for a new Dollar General store. Our main arguments to address are overstimulate, oversaturation of Dollar Generals in the area, the possible impact on our neighborhood, and safety concerns. Oversaturation of Dollar General stores in our area is a highly noticed and high concern to us. Doing a quick Google search, we show that there are $22 Dollar General store locations within a 12-mile radius of the proposed new location, five of which are within seven miles of that location. Secondly, it impacts our neighborhood and a large concern from noise, possible depreciation of our homes, loss of revenue from our county, and traffic. A 2022 study from Clemson University, for example, found that the presence of a nearby Dollar store diminished property values by 16 to 21% between 2016 and 2019. Loss of county revenue. Numerous studies have shown that roughly 45 to 60% of money spent in locally owned businesses remain and recirculate within the community, but only 14 to 13, 14 to 30% stays in the community when it is spent within a chain store. Lastly, our concerns arise of possible traffic accidents and lack of security. Safety concerns of more traffic attempting to cross over the intersection of 704 and Smothers Road, where there is no form of traffic signals, also including the intersection of Web Loop onto McCollum directly beside the property and right at my property. Concerns of security for us are possible theft, trespassers, loitering, possible illegal activity being conducted in the parking lot so close to our home. And if the economy continues to decline, it may cause store closures in the future and can result in an empty building, subject to possible break-ins and vandalism. In conclusion, I hope you will hear, understand, and consider our concerns tonight to deny the rezoning request. We feel that this is not a need for the community due to the number of existing stores already in the area, nor a want in the community based off of talking with my fellow neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you. Next signed up is Bob Jordan, who wishes to relinquish his time to his wife Renee Jordan. You have six minutes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And for the record, could you please state your name and address?
Yes. My name is Renee Jordan. My address is 1820 North Carolina Highway 704, Madison. I've come tonight to ask you to vote no to the rezoning request of the property located at the corner of McCollum Road and Highway 704 from residential agriculture to neighborhood commercial conditional. We live two tenths of a mile from the intersection of McCollum Road and Highway 704 and the proposed rezoning request property. We are opposed to this rezoning request. From our property and the property in question, you can be at another Dollar General store in just at or less than 10 minutes. I watched a video of a financial report of Dollar General on the Wall Street Journal website. According to this report, Dollar General sells cheap goods to a small number of people, though they had over $33 billion in sales last year. They pay low wages to employees, usually there's only one or two employees in the store at a time, and the median employee income, according to Dollar General, is less than $17,000. This is not a job-building endeavor. Usually, there is no fresh produce, no meats. The essentials, milk, canned goods, bread, diapers, would fill only a quarter of the footprint of the store. I know because I visited one in Madison this afternoon. The other three-quarters of the store has items that are non-essentials: area rugs, seasonal decor, storage items, greeting cards, T-shirts, et cetera. The report went on to say that Dollar Generals go where there are no Walmarts or grocery stores. There are three Walmarts within 20 minutes or less from our home. There is a food line eight miles away. The mini-mart, Carolina or J-Mart, as it was called, is just three miles away. This is not a hardship for us or any of our neighbors. When we bought land in a rural area, it's for the very reason that we don't want to be near stores. We want to be rural. We want houses, neighbors, woods, agriculture, animals, cows, not Dollar General stores. Please do not change the dynamic of our neighborhood that enjoys the rural life. We believe that a Dollar General in our neighborhood will reduce the rural appeal we now enjoy, and it will not have a positive impact. It will not be meeting a perceived storefront need, as they seem to assume for our area. We are not a food desert. By logic, traffic will increase, and with that, the increase of accidents. There is habitual speeding on Highway 704 between Madison and Wentworth. I know, because I traveled those roads, I was passed going, the speed limit myself this afternoon, I was passed three times. Jacobs Creek Fire Department is volunteer, and they already need more volunteers as it is. Please vote no to this rezoning request. The motto up on the screen for Rockingham County when we came in is, "You're in a good place." Please keep our rural neighborhood a good place. Thank you for hearing me out.
Margaret Hopkins.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Margaret Hankins. I'm from 217 Liberty Road in Reedsville. I don't live near the site. My husband couldn't be here tonight, he's with a church obligation, so I came on his behalf. We both are real estate agents licensed here in North Carolina, and we represent Terramore Development. I respect everything that they've said tonight, and I understand, but I want to put a perspective on some of the concerns because we've been to many planning and county commissioner meetings. Dollar General doesn't create speeders on the highway. People do. Dollar General doesn't create the trash on the highway, people do. The Joyce family could not be here tonight. Richard Joyce and his sister Brenda Beck own the property. I spoke with them this afternoon, and they said that, on their behalf, to let you know, this used to be a convenient store location in their family, and they've held on to the property, and they will, at this time, continue to hold on to the remaining subdivided property, but they were very excited when my husband, the exclusive agent for Terramore Development, and I'm his assistant, when we approached them and asked them if they would consider selling this property after further strategic planning models that Terramore and Dollar General do to decide on the locations of these stores. We met with them personally, and they were elated that they could put a store there for the neighborhood. It was no other intent but to bring a convenience store back to that area. In 2020, my husband and I personally sold a piece of property to Terramore Development, and it was on Business 29. Who would have ever thought? And that's one of their highest retail businesses, and the neighborhood was very much against it when we sold. We go by there very often, and they're all over there shopping, and they love it. It's convenient. Dollar General is a convenience store, is a neighborhood store. Dollar General doesn't bring out folks to create theft, to sell drugs in the parking lot. They don't do that. People do that. They are a convenience store, a neighborhood store, and that's a major corridor from Madison to Wentworth to Reedsville. I'm from that area. I grew up in Shiloh. I grew up at Shiloh Airport with the Irvin family, and I know the Joyce family personally, so I was very happy to come and meet with them and talk about them offering their property to Terramore. So I'm rooted in the neighborhood, I know the traffic volume on 704, and I know the landfill that's right next door. And on behalf of the family, I respectfully submit, on their behalf, that they would like for you to vote in favor of the Terramore store, of bringing in Dollar General in there. Thank you.
Mr. Almazan, you now have an opportunity for rebuttal. You have five minutes.
So I have been working with Terramore for almost eight years now, and so I have had the opportunity to be in many meetings, many rezoning meetings, many variances. And, and so the questions that were brought up are always the, the primary concerns with, with residents. And, and this is one of those opportunities where we can, we can speak to some of it specifically and others. It's almost like you have to bring some experts in so that it just doesn't seem like it's my opinion. So, so as far as crime, Dollar Generals will always suffer crime that is relative to the areas that they are in. And so if you see a store that's in a strip center in, in a crime-ridden downtown, then yes, they, they are sufferers of crime. In rural areas, if there's not much crime in the area, because that's the citizens that they support and that support that store, there's no crime there. And so there's, we've had, we've had experts who have gone in and done surveys of crimes, and they take logs of the, the police logs in order to see what are the crimes in and around those stores, and we've seen it consistently that, that they are not crime generators. They, they just reflect the crime that is in that area. Whenever they talk about traffic, one of the opportunities is, is that instead of having to travel 10 miles to go to the store to get something that you need, you can stop on your way to and from work, church, school, and grab what you need. And that's, that's partly why And that's partly why the company has done so well, and one of the reasons why they have a lot of stores, because the communities that they serve are typically around two-mile radius, because they expect that people are not going to travel a long way because it's not a Walmart. They don't want, they don't expect that people are going to travel a long way in order to get to one of their stores. And so one of the benefits is that they don't generate a lot of traffic by themselves. Even DOT never requires TIA's whenever we look at sites because they know traditionally the maximum that we influence the existing traffic count is 1%, maybe 1.5%. It's because they work off of the traffic that's already there, and it's basically just a stop-in, stop-out. And, let's see, crime, traffic, oh, appraisals. I know that there was some concern about that. Now, I thought that the article that they brought up was interesting because we've had an appraiser do seven different site studies, where they took Dollar Generals that we've built in North Carolina, and they looked at those specific sites and all of the properties, the residential properties around it, just to see what the effect is. And they had not found any difference between the general prices before and after those stores than properties outside of that, the view of that store. And so, meaning that, again, you know, having an expert as a witness is a little bit more telling, but I can just say that it's been consistently found that they don't really impact residential appraisal values. And so if you have any other questions, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you for the opportunity.
Any questions for Mr. Elmaso?
Just for clarification, I'm looking at this map. The entrance to the store will not be on 704. It will be on... It's too little for me to read.
Web Loop.
Is that McCollum?
It's Web Loop.
Web Loop, okay. So it's actually the Web Loop Road entrance, not 704 entrance?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, DOT had requested that. Any other questions?
Question for staff. Is there a traffic light at McCollum Road and 704?
While you're mulling things over, staff has prepared a draft consistency and draft reasonableness statement and approval or denial draft motions, you know, to assist y'all, how would y'all like to go?
Actually, Mr. Elmaso, I do have one more question. The Dollar General in Bethany, across from the Bethany School?
Yes.
Is situated in extremely similar circumstances to this piece of property, not only in shape and size, but as far as traffic volume on 158 compared to, say, traffic volume on 704? Would be interesting to know.
Yeah, with the addition of the school over there, that's...
Yeah. That's the only thing missing in this application would be the school across the street, but it'd be interesting to know if there's been any major accidents or things like that in front of that store. I don't recall reading about any, but that doesn't mean they all get published.
You know, it's funny, because it was probably a year and a half after that store opened that we did one to the east over in Stokesdale. And I don't remember anything coming up whenever we went through Planning Board, and it was the city council that we did there. But we didn't have any complaints or concerns, you know, and especially because on the Stokesdale site, we had our entrance right on the main road, where that, I guess, our site in Bethany, and I always think...
Also on 158.
Yes, it's on 158.
It's a main highway entrance.
And so I don't remember them having any issues that were brought up in that, you know, with our entrance.
Go ahead, Keith.
So Dollar General Corporate owns all the stores nationwide, right?
Actually, no, they don't own any of the stores. So what it is is a landlord-tenant relationship. And so in all of these stores, they are owned by individuals, you know, whether, like Terramore owns stores, so they're the landlord. And then what Dollar General does is they are the tenant, and they usually have, their leases are about 20 to 25 years with multiple five-year extensions. And so you can have a site that's, they're going to be there for 30 years, usually at least. And so in those cases, you know, because sometimes there's questions about conditions of properties, and a lot of times, we have miscommunication because they will try to reach out to someone in the store instead of the owner in order to pass it along to the tenant, or we've just had miscommunications a couple of times that I can think of, and sometimes it's because of the very thing that you're thinking, where that doesn't Dollar General own the store, and they don't.
The reason I asked that question, and I didn't know that.
Yeah.
So I appreciate the information, but these tenants, or whatever you want to call them, do they have to, are they under obligation by Dollar General for parent's code restrictions?
Yes.
Because I know of three stores and one in particular going into Eden at the Harrington Loop and Highway 311. Took them about eight months to mow the grass, which looked like a jungle up till about a month ago.
Right.
Which is an eyesore, especially to the people that live around it, and coming into a city, and the first impression a person's going to get, why are they not being enforced to keep their property in compliance with city standards? Well, that probably follows on planning and zoning, but you would think it would be up to the person running the business to keep their place, I guess.
It's, I know.
And it was embarrassing, really. And it took a city council member that was notified to get something done about that situation. It was pathetic.
Yeah.
A brand-new store.
That has definitely happened, and actually, that's what made me think about it. It's comparable to if any one of you have had rental property, and even though it is your property, sometimes your tenant doesn't follow the rules. And in this case, one of the problems is that managers of stores, they're dependent on the managers to notify the store services if something is not being done, because they have contracts, but it's a lot of stores. And so there's expectations that someone does what they're supposed to do, and unfortunately, at the end of the day, there's still a human involved that has to keep it from being a problem.
Well, I mean, for me, somebody big as Dollar General is in the U.S., they ought to be obligated to hold their tenants to high...
I completely agree. And it's, I mean, like, it's the same thing that happens. We go to different McDonald's, and we get different experiences, you know? And so all I can say is that the one good thing is that the stores that we develop, we manage, and we don't typically have those problems, but yeah.
The other thing you should be aware of is that any action that needs to be taken by code enforcement is all complaint-driven. I mean, it's not like there's a group of people that travel throughout the county and say, "Well, look, I've got a violation over here. That looks bad." It doesn't happen like that. Someone has to actually file a complaint.
Yeah, see something, say something. Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Well, in that case, I'll entertain a motion. And the motion should be in the packet here.
And this will go before the commissioners at their...
Yes. Yes, and I want to stress that again, that what the Planning Board decides here is merely a recommendation to the county commissioners. They're the ones that have the final say in this. So anyone who's unhappy with what our recommendation is, you're certainly welcome to address the commissioners at their meeting, which will be held on what...
September 16th.
September 16th, right here in these chambers. The motions are... Synopsis of motion is included on the last page of your packet for this case.
I motion to recommend approval of this request to rezone the specified parcel to rezoning, requested zoning district based on consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion to be included in the minutes.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second it.
Motion has been made and seconded to recommend approval of this request to rezone. All those in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. Votes three to two. Recommendation was made to the commissioners to approve. Our next case is 2024-18.
Again, that will be the September 16th meeting for the Board of Commissioners, as will these other two cases.
Okay.
Wait a second. So this next case is rezoning case 2024-18. The applicant is under the weather and could not be with us today. This is a request to rezone a property from neighborhood commercial conditional district to residential agricultural. This is supposed to not, well, I guess it is technically a conditional rezoning, but it should be a regular rezoning. We don't really see a lot of these conditional to regular districts. But this is, regardless of that type of request, that's a typo. This is a straight rezoning. It's at 163 Harrison Crossroad Loop in the Ruffin Township. As you can see, we're about a mile, mile and a half outside of the Reedsville city limits, just north of Reedsville. On this map, you can see, this is zoomed in for the zoning map, there's some RP off to the east and north, there's some neighborhood commercial off to the west, and this property was also neighborhood commercial. It was zoned as such back in 2019. Originally, it was residential agricultural, once we instituted zoning in '88. In 2019, the then-property owners wished to have an antique shop with a live-work unit, so they came forth and got us a conditional rezoning neighborhood commercial at that point. The new owners, I believe, are wanting to just turn it into, back to a residential status. This is the O2 land class, again, characterized by low-density residential agricultural areas, not typically with water or sewer. Here is the parcel of the existing condition, or area of existing conditions. We found this request to be consistent with the land use plan and reasonable due to the nature of the surrounding parcels, and the desired uses being compliant with all uses in residential agricultural, a list of which is in your packet. I'll take any questions.
What is the plan for all the buildings there, if it goes back to RA?
I don't know. We don't really restrict accessory structures to residential structures, so as long as they're just using the characteristic that would be incidental to the primary use of a house, they're allowed to remain.
Is the main structure in the center of the overhead map, is that a...
Yeah, that's the principal structure, right? That's the former house-turned-shop, live-work unit.
What was it used for primarily? Do you know?
I understand they had an antique shop there while they lived there, and so kind of nicknats, farmer marketing, kind of craft-good thingies. But the allowed uses under that conditional zoning are also in your packet. It was a broad range of just low-intensity stuff that would be typical to the neighborhood commercials area that was allowed. So, sorry, I'm on the wrong packet there. But not really anything too intensive for that area. But now, it's just, the way they did it back then, they just circled the ones that were going to be kept, you know, gift shops, flea markets, apparel accessory sales, auction sales. It was just really not high-volume traffic uses that were allowed for it, but I believe they operated antique shop.
Thank you. There is no one signed up to speak on this case, so I don't see that there's a problem with doing what the applicant wants to do here, but we'll still need a motion.
A motion to recommend approval.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve sending the commissioners a recommendation for approval of zoning map change. All in favor, please signify by raising your... Oh, wait, I've got to have a second. Oh, we did have a second.
He's seconding. Can I get that motion to amend and to include the consistency and reasonableness statement?
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Yeah, I'll read it. I motion to recommend approval of this request to rezone the specific parcel to the requesting zoning district based upon the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet submitted during the rezoning presentation and as may be amended incorporated into the motion and to be included into the minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to approve this zoning map change request. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so we'll be sending a recommendation to the commissioners to approve this request. Our next case is 2024-19.
Yes, this is 2024-19. This is a request to rezone a property from residential protected to neighborhood commercial conditional district. It's currently located at 117 Brooks Road. It's in the Reedsville Township area, and again, this is a conditional rezoning. Here's our vicinity map. It's just east of the Reedsville city limits as you head out on 158. This map makes the road a little bit difficult to see, but as you can see from the zoning, two parcels over, we do have several parcels that are located as highway commercial. The majority of the land along Brooks Road is residential protected, and behind it is residential agricultural, and across the road is residential agricultural. I've got a more zoomed-out map here in a second, just to, I'll get to that in a second. So zoomed out, you can see there is some, we're just outside the Reedsville ETJ, but that residential protected does move further east and then becomes RA, and then moves into RA 20, which is part of Reedsville's zoning. Here's the area. It's O2, again, characterized by low-density residential uses. Does mention that small shops are sometimes permissible and maybe reasonable. Does mention that small shops are sometimes permissible and maybe reasonable, but it's generally no water, no sewer. It's well-septic areas, and principally is residential agricultural. And like I said, there's a huge swath of residential protected. This is the current overview. I do believe the applicant has provided a site plan that we have in your packet, but I did not put it as part of the slideshow. I apologize. But they do have their site plan. If any comments are to be made, to add in type of conditions, or for review, and they are present as well tonight. Yeah, the site plan's this page in your packet. So, the staff, after reviewing all the concerns, and one of them I want to show you is, okay, this best scene on this map. It is not directly abutting any of the commercial use districts, and it is not necessarily having direct access to the road. So, for us, the way we approached this was, while it is somewhat consistent, if the O2 land class does say small shops are permissible in the district, however, it doesn't necessarily say commercial areas, but there is, current zoning-wise, commercial within, you know, 200, 300 feet of this area. That's a gas station to the west. But it is off a side stub road, but if you notice on this map, that road does not connect into those commercial areas. All traffic coming into this would have to divert onto Brooks from the highway, go back out, and then head towards the other commercial district. So, it's not abutting, and it's not, current zoning-wise, not grouped in with it. So, for that reason, we felt that it might be unreasonable to move forward. So, staff is recommending denial based on the unreasonableness and not fully consistent with the area. But again, like I said, it is partially consistent and partially reasonable. We just felt that it did not meet a litmus test to go over that hump, so our recommendation is denial based on that factor. But again, this is a conditional rezoning. Comments and changes to the site plan, or anything that you feel may bump up its reasonableness is perfectly acceptable to be discussed. Don't want to hamstring any intentions. So, you can add, subtract, and discuss with the applicant additional possible conditions. And I'm sorry, yeah, I did not apply the site plan to this slideshow. I'm sorry.
A question. On the site plan, it says there's a proposed banquet hall for receptions and weddings. That's 34 by 72. How many people could that hold at one time?
That'd be a question for the fire marshals. They're the ones who set those kind of things, based on suppression systems, access points, things like that. I don't, I wouldn't know off the top of my head.
Would there be enough, if 50 people, 75 people, would it be enough parking?
Again, like I said, we don't really feel that it's reasonable due to the site conditions and its location, as far as all the possible things. Those are things that could be discussed regarding your discussion with them. Y'all are allowed to relieve certain regulations or increase them. Parking could be one of those regulations that's relieved, just if it's on a temporary, non-permanent basis. So, if that thing wasn't always used, it was sometimes used, you could allocate parking across the property for that kind of thing, or if they had options for off-site parking. Those are things that could be considered. As far as what was discussed with me in our first meeting, and what may have been discussed with Lynn afterwards, this is what I've got to go with, and they're here to make their case. But as far as meeting the criteria of our commercial development, I don't think the standards that we have, it would not meet them fully for all the proposed possible uses. That being said, without knowing the full-on intended use of that building at all times, I would have to, I wouldn't be able to give you a specific count either. We just have a chart in our book we have to compare to. It's usually based on square footage when we're talking about empty shell buildings or largest staff, largest number of members of a shift. So, there's multiple facets to that point. But as far as occupancy load, that's going to the fire marshals. As far as parking load, it may or may not, depending on how you look at the whole property as a use. Not all parking surfaces have to be improved.
Mr. Duncan has a question.
Couple of questions. Shouldn't we know how many parking spaces would be designated for the use of the building to make sure that we meet the guidelines?
Yes, if you want to, but sometimes we usually handle this at TRC instead of the major site stuff. We usually look at here. We did the Dollar General as an experiment this time earlier in the meeting, but usually we go to TRC after they've gotten rezoning approval, not before. We usually work with concept site plans, so they can flesh out the site plan professionally for the TRC. So, we don't have that information tonight. If you want that information, you can discuss requiring it to come back to you with that.
My thinking is, we, just safe in case, we approve this tonight, if we did. We really don't know what we're approving, because how many people is this building going to be permitted for, for use? And for, I'm sure you have to have a certain number of designated spaces to accommodate the capacity of the building.
Right, and like I said, that being the case, it doesn't always have to be improved spaces. If the square footage of the open spaces allow for it, that can be taken into account as well. The way this has been handled in the past for us is, y'all usually add a condition in that TRC has to approve any of the specific site conditions in order for the final approval of the use of the property.
My last thing would be the septic system for the utilities for the building. I guess that land has been perked, I guess. Soil samples taken, or do you know?
It's an existing residence right now, so I assume that what's out there is just the residential system. That's a question for the applicant, and environmental health being the case for them. My department has no rulings over that.
But it wouldn't, any changes made, it would not be grandfathered in, right?
Right, they'd have to get a modification. And based on their layout here, again, you know, I probably didn't cover it well enough. I've expressed problems with the site plan into the staff report, that we don't feel that it's up to snuff for the size of the property. We're dealing with less than an acre here.
Half an acre.
It was about two-thirds of an acre. No, wait, that was the last one. This one is about a half an acre.
That's .52.
Yeah, so...
25,000 square feet, something like that.
Yeah, give or take. Probably closer to 23. So, I've got concerns about that as well, and that was addressed in the staff report. But yeah, we usually hold things like this off for TRC, for the more specific details like count of spaces. But again, if you want to see a full review, I'm not opposed. It worked well with the Dollar General, in my opinion, doing that process that way, going to TRC before planning board.
Thank you.
Do you think in that hammerhead turnaround that there's enough room for a fire truck to maneuver around in that?
Again, I don't. Whether the fire department has to turn around, or if they're allowed to back out of this because of the size, the length of the road, they have a limit to the length before a turnaround is required. I'm not sure this meets that length.
Thank you, Marzy. Next, we'll hear from Bee Chung. For the record, please state your name and address.
My name is Me, last name is Chung, address 2290 Grooms Road in Reevesville, North Carolina. So, I'm seeing there's less of an appetite for me to build a banquet center in the back, so we can just scratch that out. And on the conditions, which, if you look at the conditional list, there's a long list, and we can just scratch out the conference, center, banquet center, et cetera. We request that the property in question be rezoned from rural protected to conditional neighborhood commercial zoning to serve as a retail store catering to the demographic of Latino highway construction workers. We've agreed to conditions beforehand, minus the banquet center, actually. Because we live here, and we raise our kids here, we clean up the streets here, we want to develop our community in a coordinated manner that is respectful of the values that our town holds dear. The Rockingham Vision 2040 Master Plan states that county leaders should advocate for the NCTOT implementation of the State Transportation Improvement Program involving such projects like I-785 corridor that may provide a more direct route from Reevesville to the new Boom Supersonic Aerospace Factory in Greensboro, or to Caesar's Casino in Danville, Virginia. The Boom Supersonic Factory will be a major technology employment hub for young people, so it is our hope that Rockingham County can keep its young people living in our hometown even as they grow their careers by commuting to Greensboro through an improved transportation network. In past decades, many Reevesville's young people may not have wanted to leave their hometowns, but have moved elsewhere to pursue career opportunities due to the lack of an improved transportation infrastructure by which they could commute back and forth to their jobs. A large percentage of highway construction workers are Spanish-speaking Latinos. Currently, there are a very small number of retail businesses located in Reevesville that cater to this customer demographic. The property is located parallel to Highway 158 with an easy access for a Latino highway worker to whom he needs to purchase snacks, convenience foods, tax preparations for their construction business, money transfers back to their grandmothers in Mexico, or something as simple as a haircut. All provided in Spanish and English. The property is located in a prime location for such services and goods to be provided for this particular customer segment that will be building North Carolina's highways. By supporting the highway builders, Rockingham County can help NCTOT meet its stip goals and help build the future of Reevesville's children. I myself, I'm the founder of U.S. Industrial Group. That is a, I'm a building contractor, as well as a highway contractor for North Carolina. I am also a registered nurse, and I take care of people on life support. So, that's me. I would like to not do things that are not welcome by the community. So, if you think the banquet hall is too much, we could just scratch that off. And so, that would just mean scratching off the, on the conditional list, you know, the conference and banquet center, I would like to put a little Latino store there so that highway workers can come in for their refreshments. I've already told the sitco owner on the side, and they sell alcohol. I said, I told them, I'm not going to be selling alcohol, I'm not going to sell lottery tickets, and I'm not going to sell cigarettes. I'm a registered nurse, so you can imagine what kind of values I hold dear to me for my children. So, that's my presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on a second. Any questions for Ms. Chung?
Yes, and looking at this map, you're saying a retail store. And if I'm reading this right, I'm assuming this is a house on the front of the plot, which means I don't see room for a retail store except behind. Is that correct?
Oh, no, the house could serve as a retail store.
I'm sorry, say that again?
As the retail store.
Okay, so you would convert the house to the retail store?
Yes, sir.
Be the retail store, just like a banquet hall.
Okay. I missed that somehow, sorry.
The banquet hall is non-existent.
Erase that.
So, you'd have to, you have to build it? The banquet hall?
The banquet hall doesn't exist, and so we would, you would have to build it, but I can just erase it, because I'm seeing that the appetite for the banquet hall seems problematic, and that's fine. I mean, I really, what I really wanted to do is provide a Latino store there so that highway workers can come and get their refreshments, send money to Mexico to their grandma, and just for me to have a business to depend on, because I'm...
Can I ask a question here? So, why did you pick this spot? Why, why wouldn't you pick another spot that, with easier access, that is also close to, you know, to the major highways and stuff like that? Because I can think of some places on 29, you know, that might be more reasonable for that kind of access versus one that's down the dead-end road?
Yes, really, because I purchased the property, and other properties would require a very large loan that I can't afford. So, I'm trying to just do what I can with what I have. I'm a nurse right now, but I don't know what's going to happen, because I have multiple sclerosis, so I don't know when I'll be able to stop working. So, this is just one of my, I mean, if you guys let me, then I can hold my store there and just serve the public, and make sure I close on time to abide by the nurse restrictions, things like that for my neighbors.
Any other questions for Ms. Chung? Okay, thank you. We do have some people signed up to comment on this case, so we'll hear from the public now, beginning with Kathy Cannon. Am I pronouncing your name right? For the record, please state your name and address.
Kathy Cannon, and I live at 135 Brooks Road. There's a vacant house between myself and their property. They originally renovated the house, and someone was living in it, and it looked very nice, but it is a residential area. And myself and my neighbors, we bought our homes mine 22 years ago, them much longer. And we hope to live there peacefully after we've retired, which I have just done, but I don't see the point in having two stores there together, or banquet hall, whatever. That is a residential area with no outlet on the other end, because the road, the property between that road and the store is closed off. So, I mean, but that store is right there next to it, and they sell drinks, and they sell whatever anybody needs. So, there would really be no point in having two retail stores there together. I mean, that store is plenty close enough for us as residential.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you would, please tell us your name and address.
Judy Williams Ware. I've lived in Rockingham County all my life. I'm 81 years old. I have lived at 153 Brooks Road for 52 years. It is my home. I've worked three jobs to pay for that home. I just can't see rezoning it. If they want to have a store there, there's already a store there, right there at the end of the road. And I am not, if a family wants to move in the home and be a good neighbor, we have a good neighborhood, it's nice and quiet, and I enjoy it, and as well as my other neighbors. If they wanted to move in a home and become a part of our neighborhood, I am all for that. But right now, I am totally against anything else, and I thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Sherry Isley?
My name is Cheryl. I go by Sherry Isley. I live at 147 Brooks Road. I've lived there for 36 years, and I'm a widow, widower. My husband died eight years ago. I live on that dead-end portion of Brooks Road, and...
Where they're asking to rezone?
Where they're asking to rezone is at the very end of that dead-end area. Well, there's one extra lot between them and the store. But I live, after you come into the intersection and start down that dead-end road, I live right there.
Oh, okay. Got you.
I'm gonna try not to cry, y'all. My husband left me, and left me alone, and I am not comfortable, especially with people coming onto my property that I don't know, or parking in front of my property... coming onto my property that I don't know, or parking in front of my property. Right now, we have a van that parks right at the intersection, sort of between my house and Judy's house. And I've become a little more comfortable now that I know that it's a lady waiting to pick up her husband that's working on the bridge that's being redone. But until we figured that out, I was afraid to leave home, not knowing whether they were casing the property out or what. And my neighbor Judy has had property stolen out of, off of her lot. So we are very squeamish about just anybody being, you know, parked in front of us or own our property. Our little neighborhood consists of a lot of widows and widows. We're an older neighborhood. I'm not saying that everybody, because on down the road a little bit, there are some other younger people. But I ask you to consider if your wife, if you left here and your wife was living in one of our houses, if you would be comfortable with another convenience store right down the road on the same dead-end as us? And I would, I would think that you would say you wouldn't be comfortable with her living there by herself. But none of us are financially able just to pick up and relocate to get away from it. So my main concern is my grandchildren trying to play in my yard with traffic back and forth. It's bad enough that it's on 158, but they're old enough now that I can put them outside, and I can watch them from inside and let them play in the yard. But with traffic, not knowing who it is and how many will be there constantly, we just feel unsafe. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Marcy, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
As you look at the overhead view of this, of this parcel requesting the change, just to the north of that, is that another store?
Yes. Yeah, there's the gas station, if, well, it's not to the north, it's to the west. Yeah, north and west, but that's, past the gas station, I believe, is a church. But that gas station is two parcels over from this one.
Yeah.
Yeah. You can see the field out there.
Lawson, I believe it's Lawsonville Baptist.
It's what?
I think it's Baptist.
Yeah. But it is a gas station right there.
Always wondered where Lawsonville was.
I guess.
It is Lawsonville Baptist Church.
I'm only kidding.
It is the church.
I just got a question, just for information.
Sure.
That store, maybe y'all can help me with this. Does the bus still go there to pick up people? They don't, they used to though. Okay.
Chairman, would you like to give the applicant the rebuttal time?
Oh, yes. Ms. Chung, you have an opportunity for rebuttal.
This is why I'm not really good to be a businesswoman, because I'm very compassionate to other people's sorrows, I suppose. I don't really think that me having a Latino store would bring that much traffic or additional crime or anything like that to the neighborhood, because it's really the Citco that exists there. Obviously, there's a lot of people passing by on foot as well in the neighborhood. My other comment is that that area is so close to Highway 158, a lot of Latino highway workers really need certain kinds of very specific services, and I would like to provide that for them because they are going to be building the bridge, the highway, and things like that Reedsville badly needs. I want my children to stay near me if they want to commute to Greensboro or whatnot to work. I don't want them to move far away because, you know, our town doesn't have a thriving industry. So this is partly the reason why I want to do this. That's really all my rebuttal. Thank you, thank you. And thank you for everyone who commented.
I've got a couple of concerns. One is the dead end of Brooks. And the other is that there's a store. I mean, you could throw a rock and hit the other store. I can't believe that they don't have or carry products that the Latino community might be looking for. As far as other services, like banking or anything like that, I wouldn't have a clue. But the dead end and the proximity of another, much bigger, already well-established store concerns me. The other concern I have, having served on the TRC for a good length of time, is that I've got an idea. Since it's a commercial establishment and the length of the driveway, there is going to be a turnaround required, and we all know that's almost a 100-foot diameter turnaround.
Yeah. If it uses the cul-de-sac, they are allowed a hammerhead still, though. But this doesn't meet the, I don't think it meets their criteria for hammerhead since it's just a right angle.
But it's an awful small lot to fit all that in there.
Yes. But if it does remove the banquet hall, then there's no need for that drive to be that long either. It can just tuck into that front parking lot in front of the store, or store space.
I would say still with the store, even the store, only a half an acre could generate a lot of traffic, just, you know, at certain times.
Yeah.
And I could see the congestion, you know, within a half an acre right there in the way of shape.
Like I said, staff's major concerns were the, the access and the non-abutting of the other commercial districts, which, which caused us for our unreasonableness and non-consistency.
The two lots that are located between the existing store and the lot requesting the parcel recommending, requesting the change, I think is infringing significantly on the property rights of those two properties.
Well, just to point out, it's only the parcel directly west or east of this that still RP. That vacant parcel next to, between it and the gas station is also zoned highway commercial from this point. But it has direct access to 158 where this one does not.
Yeah.
And the road doesn't continue through. But yeah, the, that little sliver between is still RP, but the, even though it's, even though it's vacant from the aerial, looks like it would be residence protected, directly adjacent to the gas station is still highway commercial.
Yeah.
It's only the one parcel between them.
You know, I think the idea is, you know, to want to cater to a particular, you know, community, to encourage, you know, more of that diversity in our, in our culture in our county is a great idea. But having driven down to the end of that road and tried to turn my little SUV around was a problem. And I think it's, it's kind of a good, it's a good idea, but I think it's just the wrong place.
I agree.
I agree with that. And unfortunately, when staff looks at these things, we can't take in that kind of intent and that level. We have to look at the base. If this rezoning happened, and let's say that they decided to sell to someone else to open up a different type of shop in those conditions or something, that's the stuff we have to look at for when we make our opinions. So while I agree that I believe her idea isn't bad, the location still is bad, I think it opens up a Pandora's Box for future possibilities that I just don't feel are reasonable to the residential character.
Exactly. Any other questions, Marcy?
Thank you.
I'm going to side with Cory Scott here and say that this is a good idea, but it's in the wrong place. And I'm going to agree with staff and recommend denial of this request. But I'm not the one making the motion.
I'll make a motion, recommend denial of this request to rezone the specific parcels to the requested zoning district, contrary to the consistency and reasonableness determination statements that are included in the board agenda packet, submitting during the rezoning presentation, and as may be amended, incorporated into the motion to be included into the minutes.
Seconded motion?
Motion has been made and seconded to deny recommending to the commissioners that they approve this rezoning request. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. All opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so we're going to deny this request for us to recommend this change to the commissioners.
And again, every, every public hearing from tonight will be on the September 16th meeting for the Board of Commissioners for final determination. Can I get who seconded that? I was Keith. Thank you.
The next item on our agenda is going to be for me to administer the oath of office to Cory Scott and Dwayne Raykstraw. Okay. Marcy, I've got my notary stamp too to notarize both those papers.
I'll bring them up.
Okay.
You need a pen?
Yes.
What a long business. What a long business.
Maybe they can go back and tweak it when they come to the commissioners. I don't know. I just think it's just too small. Just in the wrong spot.
Should be the same statement whenever you're ready.
Okay. Gentlemen, if you will repeat after me, after I, you say your name. I
Cory Scott.
Michael Dwayne Raykstraw.
Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support and maintain
That I will support and maintain
the Constitution and laws of the United States
Constitution and laws of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina
And the Constitution and laws of North Carolina.
Not inconsistent therewith
Not inconsistent therewith.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office.
As a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board
As a member of the Rockingham County Planning Board
and Board of Adjustment
and Board of Adjustment.
And that I will not allow my actions
And that I will not allow my actions.
As a member of these boards
As a member of these boards.
To be influenced by personal or political friendships
To be influenced by personal, financial, or political friendships.
Or obligations
Or obligations.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, and welcome back to the board. Cory and Mr. Raykstraw, welcome to the Planning Board and Board of Adjustment.
Congratulations, Dwayne.
Glad to have you.
Thank you.
Ever seen it?
It's like a James Bond movie.
Swing, isn't it? Well, you know, the other thing you get is that big bulky, just a traveler. And what was the other item under new business? Oh, we wanted an update.
On the thoroughfares or corridors. Yeah, we've been looking at a few things about those as time permits. Of course, we've isolated the part of 87 between Sandy Cross and Van Street Extension for needing to possibly have the same, not quite the G3 of 220, but maybe a G2 class or something like that that fits. I've also been looking at, of course, the 29 corridor and parts of the Business 29 corridor. I'm hoping to bring these to y'all next year before we do any update to the land use plan. Land use plan calls for most revisions to look every five to seven years. I'm shooting for five years. We adopted in '21, so we'll be shooting for a '26 amendment. So I'm hoping that we can work out the details of what those corridors should look like in the next coming time that gives me time to actually update the plan itself. But those are the two spaces, two places that we've primarily identified is north of Reedsville going up 29, and some of it's the bridge intersections coming off, and the 87 bit between Sandy Cross and Van Street Extension. I have not started looking at 700 yet, or 135, or 704, but they're on my to-do list to take a look at and see what our trends are looking like.
Would you, would you consider 14 in that? You know, I mean, you got a major four-lane highway that's going between Eden and Reedsville.
Right, and a lot of that...
Commercial at both ends, but...
Right, and if it being sandwiched the way it is, we can add that to it. I haven't taken a look at it yet. A lot of the areas that can be used are being used. But what we want that to look like in the future yet, I haven't really been able to look at. I wanted to save that kind of thing for looking at both Reedsville and Eden's long-range plans, so we can kind of like, not, not disassociate from them, but kind of meld into them. So that's something that's on the radar. I just hadn't really even looked at it yet.
One problem with, with 14 is that there's so many easements for power lines in that area because they all head to the Duke Power Plant right on the Dan River up the road between, well, right in Eden, as soon as you cross the line. If you take the Dan River around the corner, there's the steam plant right there. And a lot of transmission lines that are in the county converge along 14 and head to that power plant.
Yeah, at the same time, there's several multi-acre commercial properties that are for sale, you know, that, in that area. So that's why I was curious.
Yeah, and some of those are still in Reedsville ZTJ, heading north out of there. Not all of them. Like I said, I hadn't really looked at that yet because I want to focus on our plan first before I have to meld into their plans, because I don't want the juxtaposition of coming out of their area, stark difference, and then going into Eden's area. I'd rather find a way to more or less meld both cities together.
Yeah, that was just, you know, a suggestion, because I'm thinking about where the big traffic areas are. It's generally rare.
Yeah.
You would want businesses to, you know, percolate.
Right, and much like 704 and the others, that's down on my list. To be honest with you, that was probably the last part of my list I've, I mean, started to look at.
Okay.
But it's on there.
Great. Right, thanks. So like, next year, would, you know...
Next year, I'm hoping to have actual stuff for y'all to look at, talk about, and vet before we take it to the commissioners.
Okay.
I was hoping to have it this summer, but due to everybody deciding to bail and leave us, you know, no, I'm kidding. It's just, it's, we've had a few other things tying us up, so. Little bit more involved than I have the time to dedicate everything, so it'll get there. Hey, I can do that for, I can probably milk that for another two, two, three months.
Any other questions on that subject?
The last item on our agenda is approval of the special use permit for the cell tower that we approved at the last meeting.
Yep, that should be the board order taken from the, the minutes in the conversation.
Right.
I recommend approval of the board order for supplement for 2024-16, the Gen 7 towers.
Motion has been made and seconded to approve the special use permit for the Gen 7 towers. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Opposed, like sign. There's no opposition, so the board order will be signed and presented. And now, your favorite motion, one to adjourn.
Salute.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Stand up.
Meeting adjourned.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.